Tomorrow will be better than today, and yesterday was a lesson for today.
In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rochelle Goell for LA This Week.
Park Poor LA is opening up a lot more green and open spaces for families and kids to play in, in the form of community school parks. Anna Marcos brings us the first of four parks that will open to the public.
Shouldn't everybody have a park within walking distance of where they live?
That's the idea behind this celebration, as school and city leaders ring in the first community school park in the city, this one at Harvard Elementary. School-community parks are designated open areas on a school campus that residents will now be able to use during the weekends.
I think it's a great use of the space, because we're always looking for places for our kids to play, somewhere that's safe.
Many of our LA Unified Schools are in urban, very densely populated neighborhoods, like the one here, and a safe place to go and play on weekends has not necessarily been the reality of what we've seen.
I grew up here, and I have my baby here. We're going to remain in this neighborhood, and we know that there is a lack of enough open space.
The school-community parks will mean more Angelenos will have access to green and open spaces, and have basketball and volleyball courts to play in.
We have our children drop out of school, and sometimes because we forgot to think about them after school, on the weekends. And so, we know that this isn't just about health, this is about keeping kids in school, and we always say we want schools to be the center of the community. Now, they actually will be.
The Department of Recreation and Parks will have staff on hand to keep an eye out and promote healthy activities.
Having access to playgrounds and basketball courts, it's how our children develop, not just physically, but socially.
It encourages them to have physical activity, you know, and not just stay at home and play iPads and watch TV.
City leaders say the parks are part of an overall sustainability plan. Among the goals, by 2025, 2/3 of residents will have a park within blocks of their home, no matter what part of the city they live in. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The schools with these community parks will open up the play spaces to the public on the weekends from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m., and it's all free. Air quality at the Port of LA has improved dramatically over the past 10 years, but it's not stopping there. Gil Reyes reports on challenges that lie ahead at the nation's busiest port.
The port complex today remains the single largest source of air pollution in Southern California.
Port of Los Angeles Councilman Joe Buscayino lays out the cold, hard facts at the Port of LA's Clean Air Conference, but of course, not all the news is bad.
Over the past decade, we have come a long way as an industry in addressing the challenges and solutions regarding air pollution created by port operations.
The conference with port representatives from around the world was about sharing best practices. One launch 10 years ago was the port's Clean Trucks Plan, replacing old, dirty port trucks with cleaner, burning ones. Port officials say it's resulted in a 90% drop in diesel emissions. Another plan, agreed to by the ports of LA and Long Beach last year, is to go totally gas-free by the year 2035.
We'll continue to advance green technologies in our port complexes, both here in Los Angeles and in Long Beach. We thank you for your continued commitment to social, economic, and environmental benefits of trade. Our economies definitely must grow.
But must also do so in a green way. At the Port of Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
An estimated 1 in 9 jobs in our region are linked to operations at the ports of LA and Long Beach. Councilman Mitchell Farrell talks to residents about important community issues, the athletic field at Pan Pacific Park gets an upgrade, and your furry best friend will soon have a new place to run off-leash in Eagle Rock. All of these stories in City Beat. Councilman Mitchell Farrell held the first of three community meetings to offer information on issues affecting residents of his district, particularly Glatzel Park, Atwater Village, and Allegiant Valley. O'Farrell talked about issues impacting his district, including keeping the LA River clean, traffic, and public safety, among other topics.
The homelessness right now, that's probably the biggest concern. It's just, you know, there's so many people that don't have homes, and what can we do about it, and what's being done, and what can I do about it?
It's really an empowerment piece, and time for constituents to get to understand that their local government is here, available, and accessible.
The City of LA's Department of Rec and Parks, along with Councilmember David Ruh and the Bureau of Engineering, celebrated improvements in the soccer and baseball athletic fields at Pan Pacific Park near The Grove. Some of the improvements include new energy-efficient field lighting, trash bins, shade structures over bleachers, and storm drains that will offer security and convenience to park guests. The baseball field was regraded to minimize erosion and improve drainage. A smart irrigation system will provide sustainability for the new lawn and the field. The park serves 15,000 residents living within walking distance. And over in Eagle Rock, groundbreaking was held for a new Eagle Rock Dog Park, the first in northeast LA since the last one was built 13 years ago. Originally left out of the city's budget two years ago, Councilmember Jose Huizar fought to ensure the construction of a new Eagle Rock Dog Park was included as part of the city's 2016-2017 budget. Once completed, the 3/4 acre park will create an accessible, sustainable, and natural space that's safe and comfortable for dogs and their owners. The dog park will incorporate natural features from the area, such as boulders and fallen tree branches, to create agility opportunities for pets, while adding a more enjoyable experience for visitors. The project should be completed by spring of 2019. Have you been to the movies lately? Well, one ticket can set you back around $20, and that doesn't include popcorn. But as Gil Reyes reports, Families in Pico Union recently took advantage of free screenings of a film near and dear to their hearts.
Families in Pico Union enjoyed free carnival games, also movie screenings of the Oscar-winning animated film Coco. LA's Coco Carnival was organized by Pico Union's Councilman Gilbert Sadio.
A lot of our families in this neighborhood can't afford to go to the movies, it's very pricey, so the Councilman Sadio has given the gift to the community by showing the movie Coco. We're thankful to Pixar, who allowed us to do this.
Three screenings were held at the Salvation Army's Red Shield Community Center, a gathering place for the area's mostly Latino families since 1950. These same families have embraced the film for its accurate portrayal of traditional Mexican values, like hard work, sacrifice, and respect for elders, especially in death.
As Councilmember said, it's our way of changing those negative stereotypes that are coming from Washington DC, from our president, about Latinos, and we're empowering our community to show the beauty, the culture, of what it means to be Latino.
I see your Remosos, where did you get those?
My nina made it.
Your nina made it? Wow. And how about those dresses?
We bought them.
Wow, they're traditional Mexican dresses?
Yeah.
Mexican pride alive and well in Pico Union. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Councilman Sadio's office and Red Shield also worked with the nonprofit El Centro del Pueblo together. They provided free carnival rides, food, and toys. Well, come out and support our veterans during Memorial Day celebrations. If you missed it last time, don't worry, Beauty and the Beast returns to the stage in Boyle Heights, and get ready for some Friday night fun as a popular wine tasting event kicks into high gear. All this and this week's things to do. With stunning views overlooking the city, Barnesdale Park welcomes Angelenos 21-years and older to sip wine, picnic, and watch the sunset for another not-to-be-missed season of wine tasting at the iconic cultural destination. Marking its 10th season and attracting sellout crowds, the renowned Barnesdale Friday Night Wine Tasting, the foundation's signature fundraising event, returns to the hill. There'll be a number of rotating food trucks on hand, as well as micro-pop-ups. It all takes place on the West Lawn from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. from May 25 through August 31. Barnesdale Park is located at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard. For more, visit barnesdell.org. Come show your support for our veterans during a Memorial Day celebration hosted by the Office of Councilmember Gil Sadio and the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council. All families and veterans are welcome to enjoy the festivities. The event takes place at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 26, at Veterans Memorial Park in Cypress Park, located at 609 Cypress Avenue. Backed by popular demand, Casa 0101 Theater and TNH Productions present Disney's Beauty and the Beast, the Broadway musical, in association with Councilmember Gil Sadio and El Centro del Pueblo. Performances are Fridays at 8:00 p.m., Saturdays at 2:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., and Sundays at 3:00 p.m. through June 10. Casa 0101 Theater is located at 2102 East First Street in Boyle Heights. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Listen up, Mujeres! The Third Annual Latina Conference, Mujeres Empowered for Success, is around the corner.
This conference is free and open to the public, and promotes the advancement of Latinas in South LA.
Join LA City Councilmember Karen Price and hundreds of guerreras for a day of woman empowerment, advocacy, and sisterhood. Don't forget to bring your family, friends, comadres, and neighbors. Register online at mujeresempoweredforsuccess.com.
Hi, I'm Kev from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. I'm Councilmember Mitchell Englander. I want to thank you all for being here. Today is Tuesday, May 12. Madam Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonden, Buscayinos, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Huizar, Caress, Cracorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ruh, Wesson, 10 members present and a coram, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bloomingfield moves, Mr. Bonden seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson moves, Mr. Huizar seconds. Next items, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, if everybody can please rise for the flag salute, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Nuri Martinez to lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you so much. Please rise, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, members, if we can direct your attention to the agenda, Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue Items 1B and 1C for 30 days to June 20.
All right, that'll be the order without objection. Next items, please.
Items 1 through 2 are items noted for public hearing.
Okay, and we can go ahead and take those. Do we have cards on those?
Yes, there are cards on both items.
We'll go ahead and hold those on the desk for cards. Next items, please.
Items 3 through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, we've got items to hold.
Yes, Items 5, 7, 12, and 15.
We'll go ahead and hold those on the desk, the balance of the items, colleagues. Any specials? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 24th with.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. Next items, please.
Items 21 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those items. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And do we have cards on those items?
There are cards on Item 35 and 36.
We'll go ahead and hold those too, and take the balance of those items, colleagues. Do we have any specials? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Um, Mr. President, the wards will be held over for one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, colleagues, we do have a reconsideration on, from Friday's agenda, on Council File So if we can please open the roll for the reconsideration of that item, close the roll and tabulate the vote. And then, we'll go ahead and open that up for public comment as well, for the amending motion. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on that amending motion? We don't have to add it to the kiosk if they're here and they wish to speak. Seeing none, okay, then we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Patricia McAllister, come on up. You are on Items 1, 2, 35, and 36. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, number 1, I will ask each week if I have to ask the city to lower that penalty fee for the liens on the homes from 250%. 250% is usury. Take it down to 50%. We want to keep people off the street, not people, put people on the street. Also, these people with liens, and if they lose their homes, I want some kind of ordinance written up, whereas illegal aliens cannot buy those homes. If you're not an American citizen, you cannot live in our affordable housing, nor should you be able to buy our property. No other country could you do that except here. Item number 2, this Proposition K, now this is about two pages long. I'm a, like I said, I studied accounting at Chicago State University, and this budget you have, that's a budget for organized crime, as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, item number 2, the bottom line is you're transferring money and building new funds. I see new funds being built, I saw maybe 50 last year, and these new funds, what the city attorney does, that you start transferring money out of these funds. I think that, excuse me, can I get some quiet over here?
Okay, yes. Keep it down a little bit. You got it, you got it.
I think that's where a lot of the embezzlement is going on, this is what I think, with creating all these funds. Here, in this project here, you've got about five different funds, and then you want to take 1.7 million and put it into another fund. I'm keeping track of this, I'm going to let you know that, okay? All of this transferring money, it doesn't confuse me. Now, number 35 here, this is where you want to, um, let's get it here. You got, number 35, here, police, you want to...
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. I'm Councilmember Mitchell Englander. I want to thank you all for being here. Today is Tuesday, May 12th. Madam Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bond and Buscainos, Adio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Caress, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present, and a coram, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bloomingfield moves. Mr. Bond in seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson moves. Mr. Weezer seconds. Next items, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay. If everybody can please rise for the flag salute, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Nuri Martinez to lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you so much. Please rise, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, members, if we can direct your attention to the agenda, Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue Items 1B and 1C for 30 days to June 20th.
All right, that'll be the order without objection. Next items, please.
Items 1 through 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, and we can go ahead and take those. Do we have cards on those?
Yes, there are cards on both items.
We'll go ahead and hold those on the desk for cards. Next items, please.
Items 3 through 20 are items where public hearings have been held.
Okay, we've got items to hold.
Yes, Items 5, 7, 12, and 15.
We'll go ahead and hold those on the desk. The balance of the items, colleagues. Any specials? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 24th with.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. Next items, please.
Items 21 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And do we have cards on those items?
There are cards on Item 35 and 36.
We'll go ahead and hold those two and take the balance of those items, colleagues. Do we have any specials? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Um, Mr. President, the odds will be held over for one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, colleagues, we do have a reconsideration on from Friday's agenda on Council File 13-U862-S1. So if we can please open the roll for the reconsideration of that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. And then we'll go ahead and open that up for public comment as well for the amending motion. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on that amending motion? We don't have to add it to the kiosk if they're here and they wish to speak. Seeing none, okay, then we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Patricia McAllister, come on up. You are on Items 1, 2, 35, and 36. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, number one, I will ask each week if I have to ask the city to lower that penalty fee for the liens on the homes from 250%. 250% is usury. Take it down to 50%. We want to keep people off the street, not people, put people on the street. Also, these people with liens and if they lose their homes, I want some kind of ordinance written up whereas illegal aliens cannot buy those homes. If you're not an American citizen, you cannot live in our affordable housing, nor should you be able to buy our property. No other country could you do that except here. Item number two, this Proposition K, now this is about two pages long. I'm a, like I said, I studied accounting at Chicago State University and this budget you have, that's a budget for organized crime as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, item number two, the bottom line is you're transferring money and building new funds. I see new funds being built. I saw maybe 50 last year. And these new funds, what the city attorney does, that you start transferring money out of these funds. I think that, excuse me, can I get some quiet over here?
Okay, yes. Keep it down a little bit. You got it, you got it.
I think that's where a lot of the embezzlement is going on. This is what I think, creating all these funds. Here, in this project here, you've got about five different funds, and then you want to take 1.7 million and put it into another fund. I'm keeping track of this. I'm going to let you know that, okay? All of this transferring money, it doesn't confuse me. Now, number 35 here, this is where you want to, um, let's get it here. You got, number 35, here, uh, police, you want to, in Council District 12, okay, Englander, you want more money, $98,000 for policing. Now, the police budget was, is 1.5 billion, and in that budget, you put money in there for overtime for the police. Here, you want to take $98,000 out of the redevelopment project. Redevelopment means redevelop the community, not going to the police. I see this kind of stuff going on all year with you guys. That's how you, as far as I'm concerned, that's how you get your money, okay? The redevelopment money is for redevelopment. Look at, look at the sidewalks and look at how these communities look. They're all torn down, and you want to take money out and give it to the police. Police have their own billion-dollar budget. Quit throwing money around like it's not, like it's yours. This is not your money. Now, what else? 35, let me get my, um, public comment, please. Public comment. The budget, I'm still on the budget. I, I have five books of this budget for 2018, 2019. The city attorney's office got $208.9 million, and in that budget, it states that they have 878 authorized employees. Do you hear me? Eight hundred and seventy-eight. Eight hundred are lawyers. Now, to keep the lawyers away from us, they have closed meetings now when they hire lawyers. Now, when they take this money, this money is not coming out and get, going to the lawyers. They ask for additional money, so the city attorney's office will get 158 million more to use as they see fit. It's called unrestricted revenue. Unrestricted revenue is money given to the city of Los Angeles by the donors. Now, here's another thing. I want that 1.2 billion dollars HHH money spent on housing. We had the Koreans here this morning. They're crying. You're not building housing anywhere in this city. I want to know where that 1.2 billion dollars is. You got it in 2016? I've been driving around, I've seen no new houses. I have all the addresses.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe that concludes the multiple speaker series. So the last public comment cards, if you can all come up together. Debbie Gambino, Jamie Hall, Kevin Burke, Miki Johnson, Noel Weiss, Ray Mawat, and Yu John Chen. So you each have one minute for general public comment. If there's nobody else for general public comment, those are all the ones we have. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Hall. I am, was just retained to represent the Korean community that is opposed to the homeless shelter at 682 Vermont. And I just want to express how frustrating it is for many of the residents who this is their first introduction to coming to City Hall, the democratic process. They get their hearing, and then only 15 people get to speak. I think that that is really, really unfortunate, and regardless how you feel about the issue, people should be able to feel that their voices are heard. Only 15 minutes was given. If you get, that means only 15 people got to speak. There were a lot of disappointed people today who feel very upset and who feel, don't understand the democratic process. We would ask you rehold this hearing and allow the people to come and speak. That was not right.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Gambino.
Good morning.
I'm a small business owner, catering company on Venice Boulevard underneath the 10 freeway, directly across the street from a major homeless encampment. Mr. Wesson took his time, 40 minutes, hi, Mr. Wesson, on Friday, or thus Thursday, to call me, to go over my concerns regarding the temporary housing, the problems that we're having with RVs, parking for months on the street, human waste being dumped into the sewer system, on video, by the way. Nothing's been done about that. I can't even have clients come to my office because of the homeless encampment across the street. I appreciate that you are finally taking seriously the homeless issue that we have in this city that has been going on for years.
Great, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, please. Whoever's ready, it doesn't have to be in any order. Come on up. Morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Kevin Brunkie. I was unable to speak at the Homelessness and Poverty Committee earlier today. I serve on the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council, but I'm here as a resident who lives within half a mile of the proposed temporary homeless housing facility at 682 South Vermont Avenue. With close to 400 homeless in Koreatown, every day is a reminder of the crisis at our doorsteps. Outside my home even, on my way to the Purple Line today, I counted three encampments on one block. Most importantly, these are people, parents with children who've been priced out of their homes, seniors unable to keep up with healthcare costs, mothers and sisters who are survivors of domestic violence, people in need of supportive services and housing. Yes, there are important questions and community concerns to be addressed, but doing nothing is unacceptable. So I'd like to thank my councilmember, Council President Herb Wesson, for your bold leadership, example, and putting forward this motion to research the feasibility of temporary housing at the Vermont site. You can count me in.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Miki Jackson. I'm with Healthy Housing Foundation, Project of AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I'm here to talk about the problem of the city council not adequately funding or supporting the city health commission. The city health commission should be taking an active vital role in our issues of homelessness. The issues of homelessness are enormous, the public health issues. And yet, this commission has no money. It has a part-time intern for staff. It cannot produce reports. It cannot do very little. And the one report that it did produce, this city council has refused to give a hearing to, refused to accept. I think the negativity the city council is showing towards this very important commission is quite obvious, and I urge you to stop doing that. I urge you to start supporting this commission at the same level you support other commissions. This is not a sustainable attitude to take towards a city commission, and you will have a lot of problems over it if you continue.
Great, thank you.
Counsel, good morning. This homelessness issue kind of takes me back to April of '07 when Janice Hahn and Bill Rosendahl worked with myself and others to get the tenant relocations fee raised. 12-hour, two-day debate. I don't know that we would get that kind of debate before this council today, which is very, very unfortunate. But Mr. Weezer, who was a rookie then, stood up and said rhetorically, and what is the housing policy of the city of LA? And what is the affordable housing policy of the city of LA? And of course, there was no answer. That was April of '07. Going forward, I want to continue with my theme relative to Mr. O'Farrell's senseless, unconscionable indifference toward tenants, border house tenants that were involuntarily removed from a property that he basically sponsored on behalf of a special interest. Mr. O'Farrell received a letter from the City Planning Commission, February 23rd, 2018, alerting him to this situation. To be continued. Next public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, unless there was somebody else. I believe you're, yeah, you were the final speaker then. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Yoo Joon-Tan. I'm Senior Manager of Urban Forestry Policy at Chi People. I'm here for item number five. Chi People supports this ordinance. Additionally, we strongly agree with many of our colleagues that a tree inventory, a long-term urban forestry management plan, and sufficient funding for the urban forestry are all urgently needed. However, this ordinance should go into effect regardless because we don't want more trees die in the nursery. We would like to work with the council and other partners and on this issue and many other urban forestry-related issues such as a tree replacement issue based on scientific methods and also including ecosystem services, get implemented as soon as possible. Thank you for your support on urban forestry.
Great, thank you very much. So that concludes all the public comment and the general public comments. We'll go ahead and close those remaining items on this meeting. I've also got ordinances for reconsideration for the 12 votes, and we're going to go ahead and reconsider then Items 3 and 4, 21, 22, and 23, 24, 25, and 26. And so we can open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved.
And that was for reconsideration, a second vote is required.
Oh, yes, correct. And now we'll go ahead and vote on those items. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. Now we can go ahead and take Items 1, 2, 35, and 36. Okay, so those items are now before us, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Now we have a very special presentation. If we can draw your attention to the podium. Oh, and as you're doing that, and Mr. Wesson is making his way, Mr. O'Farrell.
Item 2 forthwith, please.
Okay, item 2 forthwith, without objection, then that'll be the order. Thank you. Mr. Wesson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Members, many of you have had the opportunity to come to my district and Mr. Harris Dawson's district around the, when is it, the middle of October? For the past 12 years, we've had this very, very, very small street festival. I mean, it's a real tiny street festival. It's called the Taste of Soul on Crenshaw Boulevard. I want to say, last year, we only had about 360,000 people that attended the event. So like I said, it was a very small event. This event has gone on for 12 years, and it attracts Angelenos from all over the great city of Los Angeles, and also guests from other cities. It's food, it's music, it's performances, it's good times. We have booths and neighborhood councils are always represented, and it is a fun day for everybody that participates. And we really want to give a big thank you to the Los Angeles Police Department, to the Fire Department, for all of the city services that come out to ensure that this is a phenomenal day. But most importantly, I just want to give a shout-out, a handshake, a salute to the over 350,000 people that come on an annual basis, and they come for one reason and for one reason at all, and that's just to have a straight-up good time, to see friends they haven't seen for a while, to enjoy the glorious day. Now, what Mr. Harris Dawson and I do, we diet about three or four days before the Taste of Soul so that we can on that day pig out, because the food is unbelievable, and you name it, and we have it. I have joining with me today the founder of this Taste of Soul celebration, an individual that is no stranger to this city or to this council. Let's give a round of applause for Danny Bakewell, Sr. Give him a round of applause. I can remember the very first time we had a conversation about this. It was Mr. Bakewell, Doron Williams, my Chief of Staff, and this little idea has grown and mushroomed into one of the most phenomenal festivals that we have. Now, last year, we brought in a sponsor called Hyundai, and they decided that why not make this event a little, a little more exciting? So they, they gave away a car. They gave away a vehicle. I want to say that Marquise even knows the young couple who, who won this vehicle. They're great people, they're foster parents in the system, and, and, and we wanted to thank Hyundai, Zafar Brooks behind me, he's the man that was able to persuade the company to do this. Let's give Mr. Brooks a round of applause. Because I believe they're going to talk him into coming back and doing it again. But with that said, the, the, the man behind this, this event, the man that knew that in South LA, that we could all come together and have a very special day where we could show off our wares and show off our culture and show off our community to thousands of people from all over the great city of Los Angeles. So with that said, I'd like to welcome to the podium Danny Bakewell, Sr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me begin by saying, this could not have happened without Herb Wesson. His ear, his belief that the community would respect and come out and support something in our own community that we got behind is the reason that we have Taste of Soul today and the reason it's so successful. I too would like to thank the Police Department, the Fire Department, and Mothers in Action, who's our partners in terms of making Taste of Soul successful. But I also want to thank all of you. I'm talking to a lot of you individually as we go on. This could not happen without your unanimous support of Taste of Soul. Herb has been the champion, he's been the leader from day one. Harris Dawson, Councilman Harris Dawson, and Councilman Karen Price have been our co-chairmen. Harris Dawson and Herb Wesson, it functions in their districts, and I'm telling you, not only is this a great family festival, but it also is the largest economic small business fair in all of California. It is, it has also been, voted nationally, the number-one African-American food festival in the country. So you deserve a lot of credit for that, and we really do appreciate your support, and we want you to continue to do it. Zafar Brooks and Hyundai could not be given enough credit. They came to us. We're always looking for sponsors. This sponsor found us and said, I want to be a part of that. This guy, who is the representative of Hyundai, came, sat down, talked about what our needs were and how he could immerse the company in providing things that would really make this day better. They gave us a car. They're giving us another car this year. People from the community won the car. It's been a magnificent occasion. You can come and you can eat, you can enjoy yourself, you can also promote your business if that's what you want to do, and you might ride away with a car. So I want to thank all of you. Again, I just cannot say enough how appreciative we are to this city council for the kind of general leadership that you provide in this city, because this allows us to all know, it's a Taste of Soul. It's clearly in the heart of the African-American community, but this, we say it's our home where everyone is welcome, and believe me, they come. I want to ask Zafar Brooks to come up and just say a few words.
Thank you, thank you. Well, good morning. I'll just make this very brief first. Thank you to the city council for allowing us to be here this morning. Thank you, Mr. President, for those very kind remarks and that recognition. This couldn't happen without Mr. Danny Bakewell, who really deserves all the credit for his leadership in the Bakewell Media Group for what they've done for this community for a lot of years. So thank you, Mr. Bakewell, and your entire organization for what you do. You know, Hyundai Motor America has called California home for over 33 years. This is our home. We're just south in Orange County, but we are proud to be Californians, and we enjoy this community. So it was totally and perfectly consistent with our values. I lead diversity and inclusion in our corporate social responsibility practice. It was totally and wholly consistent with our values to be connected with the Taste of Soul. We believe we are better together and working together with the communities and trying to do good things that help to elevate and amplify the community. So we're honored to be a part of this association. We're very proud to be with you, and we look forward to 2018 having a wonderful, wonderful opportunity, and maybe, who knows, we'll get to 400,000 people this year. Oh, this year, we will be so proud to give away our newest vehicle in our lineup. It's an SUV, and it's called the Kona. So we're going to introduce the 2019 Kona. Thank you very much. And I must take this time also to recognize our, our friends and fellow citizens in the Big Island in Hawaii, for which Kona is recognized, is named candidly. So we, we send prayers and well wishes to those people during the time of natural disaster. But we're going to bring this Kona forward. We're going to have a great celebration. Very soon, we'll announce some of the artists that will be joining us, but we look forward to having a Taste of Soul on October 20th, right here in Los Angeles, to be proud to be a part of this community. So thank you so much for having us.
Just before you make the presentation, Herb, I just want everybody to see Ms. Tracy Mitchell. She runs Mothers in Action, and consistent with the values of this city council and the city and the mayor, one of the outgrowths of Taste of Soul is that we feed the homeless, and we provide some ongoing care for them, and it all happens and we provide some ongoing care for them, and it all happens because of Taste of Soul. So I just want you to give her a big hand. Thank you.
All right. We also have Mr. Harris Dawson on the queue, and has been on the queue, and wanting to speak, and grabbing the mic, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Weston, for bringing this presentation, and thank you to the Bakewell family for the gift of Taste of Soul along Crenshaw Boulevard. I cannot emphasize enough, colleagues, how big a deal this is for the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. It is the biggest block party anywhere in the country, stretching more than a mile along Crenshaw Boulevard, hundreds of thousands of participants in it, some of the best soul foods you can get anywhere, there's multiple stages, and so it is just a good time. Ms. Martinez asked for a rain check last year, so we're going to take you up on it this year. You're going to be with us at the Taste of Soul in October.
You'll come get her.
It's good, because you get to eat, you know, after you go on your three-day diet, you get to eat, and then you can walk down Crenshaw, you can walk a little bit of it off, and then get some more food, and walk a little bit more of it off, and get some more food. I also want to take a minute to recognize Hyundai. It's not a small thing that they've, their participation in the Taste of Soul, the young couple that won the car last year, that was a big deal for them. Lets them stay in Los Angeles, lets them raise a child that they've adopted and brought into their home, so it's no small thing, and I would note that I have intimate knowledge of how much Hyundai has been involved in our community for years. When I was Executive Director of Community Coalition, you all used to donate multiple vehicles every year to not just Community Coalition, but a host of organizations to make sure we could get around and conduct our business. So we're very thankful for your participation. We invite everybody out to the Taste of Soul. Even if you don't win the car, Uber will give you a discount on a ride home. So we're very excited about it, and invite everybody to Crenshaw this October.
And you know, also, they give away scholarships every year. But with that said, where's Mr. Brooks from Hyundai? Come on, and I'd like, you stay right here, and then, to Mr. Bakewell. In fact, why don't you quickly introduce the folk behind you?
I don't know if I know all these people. Pam, why don't you come and introduce everybody? This is my sister, she's the CEO of the company.
Okay, there is a woman behind usually all of these things. Me too, all right. But I'm not going to say all their names, I'll probably forget them. This is our Taste of Soul team, our LA Sentinel team. I do want to give special tribute to Brenda Marsh Mitchell, who is also president of Taste of Soul, passed away, was with Danny for forty-five years, this is his right arm. Mothers in Action, we could not do Taste of Soul without Mothers in Action. It's the nonprofit that keeps Taste of Soul going. I really want to be sure that Tracy Mitchell is known for her presidency. She's making sure that Taste of Soul funding goes out to the community through scholarships, through back-to-school events, through homeless feeds. So even though we don't publicize that part of what Taste of Soul does, it's the event that boosts the rest of what we do all year. But just wave to everybody, this is, only six of us put on Taste of Soul, maybe ten, okay?
I do have to acknowledge my son, who takes care of all the logistics. Taste of Soul is one of the safest events that goes on in this city. There's never been one incident at Taste of Soul in twelve years. So that's a tribute, not only to us and the people who come out, but also to you, and the city of Los Angeles, and the Police Department, and the Fire Department. They do an amazing job. Danny? He's the coordinator.
Okay, so now I'd like to present this to the both Bakewells, to Bakewell Senior, and to Bakewell Junior, and to Pam, and to everybody. So let's give them one more round of applause.
Mr. Weston, one more time, when's the actual date, so we all can be there?
October twentieth.
October twentieth, all right.
That's a Saturday.
Third Saturday of October.
Fantastic. So you say there's three-hundred-thousand people, you got another.
And our mayor comes and plays music there.
Oh, there we go.
So we need to invite Buscagino to come and sing. Come sing some Temptation songs, Joey B.
There we go.
You got a spot, you got a spot.
Mr. O'Farrell's going to come up, come and dance, and everybody's going to bring their talents and treasures, all right.
Why don't you all just come and do something?
And I'll bring my drum kit, there you go.
Here, come on, we're going to go to that. All right, let's go to that. Yeah, all of us.
All right, we have another final presentation. Councilmember Bob Blumenfeld, if you want to make your way to the podium.
All right, colleagues, you may try to, you may guess what this is about when you look at the folks who are behind me. There's a theme here, when you look at these. These are all faces that you know. That's right, folks, we are here to celebrate National Public Works Week in the city of Los Angeles. The American Public Works Association has declared May twentieth through twenty-sixth, 2018, National Public Works Week, and by joining all their cities across the country in celebration of this, we are going to bring attention to the literal foundation of our city. The Los Angeles Department of Public Works, consisting of the bureaus of contract administration, engineering, sanitation, street lighting services, street services, board offices, they build, maintain, monitor, and improve our city's infrastructure. Each play a critical role in maintaining the health of our great city. And it's wonderful to have so many leaders from the Department of Public Works and the Commission here today to celebrate National Public Works Week. We have here, we have Board President Kevin James, Board Vice President Heather Repinning, President Protam Mike Davis, Commissioner Joel Jacinto, Commissioner Aura Garcia, Norma Ishakayin, I always pronounce that wrong, I'm sorry, Executive Director of Bureau of Street Lighting, John Reamer, the Inspector of Public Works, Bureau of Contract Administration, Nazario Salsido, Director of Bureau of Street Services, although Nazario, this will be your last year as a celebrating National Public Works Week. Next year, you'll be a civilian, so it'll be a whole different perspective on this work week. Ken Redd, the Assistant Director of the Bureau of Engineering, Lisa Maury, CFO of Bureau of Sanitation, Fernando Campos, the Executive Director of the Board of Public Works, Udak Joe Intuk, the Petroleum Administrator for the Board of Public Works, Eva Betar, the Motion Picture and Television Manager, Board of Public Works, and Paul Rack, the Office of Community Beautification. What a great team, let's give them a big round of applause. I became Chair of the Board of Public, not the Board, but the Public Works Committee last July, and it has been a fantastic and non-stop ride, working with these great folks to address our city's infrastructure needs. Without our basic infrastructure, such as roads, and streetlights, and bridges, we would not be able to accomplish our everyday routines and basic tasks, whether it's eating at your favorite restaurant, or shopping for necessities, we need our infrastructure. Our sewers and storm drains help keep our city clean and safe, and ensure our public health. Public Works are the critical infrastructure needed for a sustainable economy, which fuels the resources that contribute to our quality of life. Public Works maintains safe roads needed for law enforcement and other public safety agencies, such as firefighters and paramedics, to quickly travel throughout the city to respond to emergencies. Clean and safe roads, sidewalks, and bridges allows our residents and tourists to travel to various parts of our city for family outings, and leisure, and work, and everything else. Public Works is the bedrock, and literally the foundation of our city, the foundation of our community and our neighborhood, and their work is never done. It is our job to not only fix and maintain our streets and sidewalks, but make sure the trash gets picked up, and ensure our bridges are safe. And Public Works also has to have a vision, a plan to execute that vision, so Los Angeles continues to be on the cutting edge when it comes to infrastructure. From cool pavement initiatives, to utilizing creative materials to cut the cost of fixing our roads, we are collectively pushing what was once thought possible with regard to local and infrastructure, and we are pushing the envelope. Every Angeleno and visitor that comes to our city deserves the best and most innovative roads, sidewalks, and general experience. Before we publicly declare Public Works Week, which I know you have all been this weekend, you were waiting in anticipation, and now we're here, and it's so exciting, yes, before we do that, I want us, we're going to hear from the Vice President of the Department of Public Works, Heather Repinning, and then from Commissioner Joel Jacinto. So Heather, take it away.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfeld. From Council President, Councilmembers, we really want to thank you for recognizing Public Works Week again this year. Public Works touches every aspect of our daily lives, and provides the basic conditions for the healthy, clean, and vibrant environment we wish for each of our neighborhoods. This coming year, we look forward to expanding our partnerships on many important areas, including reducing the amount of food, of waste we're sending to the landfill, including food waste. Food decomposing in our landfills is a huge emitter of greenhouse gases, and so we're supporting those organizations that collect edible food and get it in the hands of the many, many of our city's residents who are food insecure. We also look forward to helping design and build those temporary sites to house our homeless population, and continuing to protect public health through regular cleanups of the public right-of-way. And finally, we're in collaboration with LA County on a program that will take our watershed protection to the next level, so that we can build those green streets, green alleys, and green our sidewalk program, to clean our beaches, lakes, and rivers for everyone. We're very proud of the work we do year-round with all of you, with your staff, and with your neighborhoods, and in partnership with local businesses and local workers. We look forward to continuing to deliver core, critical, core city services in the year to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Repinning, and now Commissioner Jacinto.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfeld, for your leadership and for this wonderful proclamation. Honorable City Councilmembers, and we have to give a shout-out to our colleague Commissioner, our loss, your gain, Councilmember Monica Rodriguez. Many good things, wonderful things come out of Public Works. And I just wanted to share, bring us back to basics, to borrow a phrase from our mayor about his back-to-basics agenda. The reason, the mission statement of our Department of Public Works, over five-thousand employees, is to support and enhance the high quality of life of the city residents, businesses, and visitors, by providing a well-planned, environmentally sensitive, and cost-effective infrastructure through superb customer service. And when you think about the theme of this year's Public Works Week, power of public works, three Ps come to mind, these three concepts, the idea of partnerships, that we're not able to do what we do in all our bureaus without the leadership, without the partnership of our electeds, and the wonderful departments that we work throughout with in the city of Los Angeles. The sex is, the second is the progressive policies that allow us to address issues, such as whatever we could do for homelessness and accessibility. But the third, and we'll wrap it up with this one, this idea of privilege responsibility. Because this is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and we're led by our great Councilmember, David Rue, and there was a mention of Hawaii, that I'm going to share with you this idea of this word, kuliana. And kuliana is the Hawaiian term for privilege responsibility, and that's what our department, all our bureaus, all our five-thousand employees get to do every day, is to be able to serve the people in the best way possible, in all ways, and in all ways. So thank you to our Los Angeles City Councilmembers for allowing us to be the better angels of our nature, and to be the better angels in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council and the Mayor of Los Angeles do hereby proclaim May twentieth through twenty-sixth, 2018, as National Public Works Week, and encourage all Angelenos to recognize the contributions of Public Works professionals, and maintain, to maintain and improve the quality of life. Let's give it up for them, and here's a little certificate.
We have a number of speakers on the queue as well. So before we do that, Mr. Buscagino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to honor and recognize the work that the Public Works family has done here in our city, and prior to Bob's leadership in serving as a chairman, I've had the distinct pleasure to work alongside these men and women before you, colleagues. Men and women who have committed to our basic infrastructure needs in the city of Los Angeles. You know, we heavily rely, as we drive our cars in our streets, flush our toilets, looking at how we engineer our city. We rely on each and every one of you, and those thousands of employees outside City Hall. We thank you, we recognize you, and we want to really highlight the work that you're doing each and every day. In my role as Second Vice President of National League of Cities, I have seen firsthand of cities today continuing to structure with infrastructure needs. This is why nationally, we are calling on the federal government to rebuild with us cities across the country. We continue to see failing streets, and roads, and bridges from coast to coast. But here in the city, we've taken it upon ourselves to tax ourselves, because we couldn't wait for Washington DC, to filter these federal dollars to our state and to our local municipalities.
You're way over your time, Mr. Buscagino. Be wary of that, that's okay, don't worry about it. Keep going, you're on a roll.
And, I mean, something that we're passionate about, today, if you see the city of Los Angeles, we're modernizing our port, we're modernizing our airport. We, in the budget that we approved yesterday, the nearly ten-billion-dollar budget, we're paving more streets, we're trimming more trees, we're fixing more sidewalks and everything. So cities today are turning to Los Angeles as a model city, but we still need work to do. We need to look at creating more efficiencies within this bureau, and it's something that I'm introducing today, a motion to call for more efficiencies within the Department of Transportation and Street Services. I believe studies after studies show, over forty years, that people in this building have called for that, and I think now is the time to do just that, because we have to look at creating more efficiencies within the bureau, because we owe it to the people in the city. So I want to recognize Chairman Blumenfeld for allowing me to hand over the baton, and we are in good hands with your chairmanship, Bob, and again, thank you so much for your service to the entire bureau, the entire Bureau of Public Works family. We thank you, we recognize you, and we love you. Thank you, Mr. President.
One minute thirty-nine seconds over, that's okay, Mr. Buscagino. Mr. Corretts, Joe took most of your time, but.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be brief, since Mr. Buscagino was not. I want to thank you, Bob, for bringing this recognition forward, and this is an incredible department. You do so much good in terms of environmental protection and infrastructure. I've worked with the members of the board and the departments, and you've just done an incredible job on really a budget cut far more than we would like. Hopefully, we restored a little bit of that in this budget, and we'll continue to do that in the future. But it's been great working with all of you, and it was great working with Monica when she was on that board, and particularly worked with us on a rain barrel program that was very successful. So I thank you for all your great work, you're one of the most important parts of the city of Los Angeles, and I commend all of you for that.
All right, and Councilwoman Rodriguez, you have as much time as you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. President, because I was going to reclaim my time had you interrupted But it's my great pleasure to recognize and join in my colleagues' celebration of the work, that the important work that the Department of Public Works provides in the city of Los Angeles, and to the over fifty-five-hundred men and women that serve our great city each and every day on the front lines, helping to repave our roads, helping to trim trees, which they're doing in my district today, thank you. I'm just incredibly grateful for the tenure that I had, serving on the Board of Public Works, working with some incredible individuals that helped to better prepare me for the role that I serve in today. And I want to thank Nazario for your tenure and your service to the city of Los Angeles. This is going to be your last Public Works Week celebration, but I want to thank you so much, because I know you come with an incredible amount of history in this, in the Department, in the Bureau of Street Services in particular, and I'm just, I'm grateful to know you, and to have had an opportunity to work alongside you. John Reamer, who was my partner in crime in helping to make sure that we were advocating for the little guys, making sure that so many of the small women, minority-owned businesses had a voice, had, were protected in our contracting process, but you provide such incredible leadership and thoughtfulness on so many areas, and I'm just, I'm grateful for you. just, I'm grateful for you. I don't know if Gary's here, but our Bureau of Engineering, you know, it's, I, you know, I've shared many times that I think the, the bureau is in really great hands and has also been a very great example of the succession planning that I think so many departments in the city of Los Angeles would greatly benefit from. And, you know, you guys touch a number of areas and have been outstanding. Our Bureau of Sanitation has been a partner in, and I give, you know, I always, you know, poke at Enrique a lot, but, you know, the Bureau of Sanitation provides such incredible work each and every day when it comes to some of the issues that we deal with and are confronted with on a daily basis, not just picking up the trash, but all the additional roles that they have to play, especially as it relates to our homeless crisis. OCB, I see Paul Roach there, and OCB is just always an incredible part of our day-to-day service in graffiti abatement. And I'm trying to remember, oh, and street lighting. Norma, I'm very excited, that was one of my bureaus, and I'm just grateful for the innovation that came out of street lighting and continues to come out of street lighting. But again, and to the colleagues, former colleagues on the Board of Public Works, thank you for your service. And again, I'm just, I'm grateful for the opportunity to have served alongside you and help to bring some of those experiences, all of those experiences here to the council. So thank you so much. And in celebration to all the employees in the Department of Public Works, we salute you this week and every single day of the year. Thank you.
So please accept this small token of appreciation and celebration of National Public Works Week. All right. All right, let's give another round of applause. Councilmember Rodriguez, you still had 42 minutes left on the queue if you wanted to use those. They're always yours. Okay. And, and with that, colleagues, we have a couple of other items, but we have a special presentation from Councilmember Joe Buscagno as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This is, you know, over the weekend, we saw royalty in, in London, but we have our own royalty here with PSR Stephanie Nelson retiring over 30 years of service to our great city. Let's give her a warm.
Wow.
John Ferraro, Council Chambers, welcome. Just a few weeks ago, in these chambers, we recognize the city's police service representatives for National Dispatchers Week. These are the men and women who work tirelessly behind the scenes in the Los Angeles Police Department, like people, as you know, answer our 911 calls, notify the LA Police and Fire Departments to respond to your emergencies. Well, we are very blessed and fortunate enough to honor Stephanie Nelson, who gave over 32 years of her life to our police department, and is surrounded by her former colleagues in the Community Relations Section, which I had a blessed opportunity to work alongside these men and women behind me. Memorable experience in the Community Relations Section. Stephanie here began her career as a PSR in 1986. Damn, Stephanie, I was in sixth grade. So you must have, you must have started when you were like 10, maybe?
Yes.
But, very, very early on. In 1990, her expertise and personality led her to selection of the Bureau Communications Coordinator, and later as instructor of the Radio Telephone Operator Training Officer. And it's because of her love of people, her commitment, her compassion to serve, her outstanding work ethic, flexibility, dependency, dependability rather, and tenacity, of course, that got her to that level. I just want to highlight a few of her accomplishments, if I can, colleagues. In 1991, participated in the Area Command Center, the ACC Loan Program at Hollywood in Wilshire Divisions. In 1992, she was elected, selected to work the Civil Unrest Command Post. In 1999, Stephanie was assigned to the Public Affairs Community Relations Section, Community Affairs Group. In 2005, when she was assigned to then recently created Department of Events Planning Section, Office of Chief of Police, her duties included updating the LAPD online webpage, facilitation of dignitary tours, event planning, event fundraising, as well as the help and the dedication to the LA Police Memorial Foundation's Golf Tournament. As you know, the Memorial Foundation helps those officers who have died in line of duty and the spouses and children that they have left behind. In 2013, she created her, increased her responsibilities by assisting the youth services officers with the Cadet Program. And in 2016, Stephanie returned to Communications Division. She picked up where she left off and excelled at her assignment given to her. She'll be greatly missed by her colleagues within the Communications Division and all the areas that she served under and the specialized details that she worked for. We have, they've also relied on her reliability, and there is no other PSR like Stephanie Nelson here before you. I do want to take a moment to recognize the individuals that have surrounded her with love and support over the years, accompanied by several of her former colleagues, as I indicated, Debbie Vernacci, Stephen Rifle, Lieutenant Anita McEwen, who was at the time Officer in Charge of the Public Affairs Unit, Police Officer Three, John Long, also now the K-9 Officer, right, John, at LAX PD? And I think you're, you're like, a few more years?
Less than a year.
Less than a year, then he'll be retiring. We'll be here about this time next year, celebrating John's career. And our partner, Sarah Faden, who you've seen here on the floor and a number of events, working for the LAPD's Media Relations Unit. So Stephanie, we thank you, we love you, we recognize you for your 32 years of service, and I'd like to give her an opportunity to say a few words.
Oh, geez.
Because she's never short on words. Love you.
Oh, God. Well, first of all, just thank you, Joe. I've known Joe since he was a P-2 at Public Affairs Unit. And back then, he always had aspirations. He wanted to become a council member, so he was gunning for Janice Hahn's position.
Come on, say it.
He was waiting for her to leave, and as soon as she did, Joe was right in there. But, yeah, the group I have behind me is just, we're more than just coworkers, we're friends. We work together so well, and I really enjoyed my time on this police department, not only as a 911 dispatcher, but also working in the Public Affairs Unit, just doing all the events for, for then-Chief Bernard Parks. He was our boss, so we had a lot of fun doing all that. So I just want to thank Joe for presenting me with this today.
Yeah, of course.
And just making this a great day.
Thirty years, let's give her another big round of applause. Truly, truly remarkable.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, Mr. Englander is a Chairman of Public Safety Committee.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you very much for your service and dedication.
Yeah, thank you.
It's remarkable.
On behalf of Chairman Englander, Public Safety Committee, and all members here, and the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, who recognize Stephanie Nelson for 32 years of service to the Los Angeles Police Department. We love you, we thank you, and enjoy your retirement, and you've earned it, you deserve it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Joe, thank you.
All right, what do you want to share right here?
We'll all grab it along as we go to the back.
Mr. Blumenfeld, you had an acknowledgement?
Yes, as soon as they're done with the presentation.
Yeah, they're done, you can go ahead.
Great. Well, we've got, we've got some students here I want to acknowledge, from Village Charter Academy, the Leadership Council. Why don't you guys stand up in the back? We have fourth and fifth graders. They're fro, yeah, let's give them a hand. Village Charter Academy in Canoga Park, I don't know if we can get the camera on them to make you guys famous there. See yourselves? All right, let's give it up for them. Thank you. This is the third year that they've come to City Hall to see the work that we've done.
All right, welcome. Thanks for being here. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and take, we're going to take item 12. Item 12. So item 12 is the Los Angeles Fire Department honorary street signs. Colleagues, I wanted to bring this item to your attention, so I actually called it and held it on the desk. As you may recall, a number of years ago, we put up signs throughout the city of Los Angeles of our fallen police officers and that died in the line of duty. And we felt it was important to actually update this program and include our fallen firefighters at the various locations that they too paid the ultimate sacrifice. And we've got an actual rendering I wanted to show you of the signs. So it's on, should be on the, there we go. So this is what they're going to look like. If you recall, as you look, go through the city of Los Angeles, I worked on putting the ones up of the police officers, and those were done, obviously, with the police logo in, in blue. And this is to commemorate forever and memorialize those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. I do have an amendment I wanted to bring to your attention. I wanted to make sure, working with the Historical Society and also working with UFLAC, they suggested both that we include on the signs the history of what their actual titles were at the time that they succumbed to pay the ultimate sacrifice. And so they had various titles that had been changed throughout the years, fireman, auto-fireman, lieutenant, single-function paramedic. Many of those titles have been changed for so many different reasons, and they wanted to make sure the signs were accurate as to when the, when they lost their lives, and I thought that was incredibly reasonable and a great request. In fact, 62 firefighters in all have died in the line of duty here in the Los Angeles city. And, and so my amendment is to make sure that we include what their actual titles were on the signs. And Mr. Cacorian, if you could second that, I'd appreciate, thank you very much. And so, and Ms. Rod, yeah, okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Rodriguez and, and Ms. Martinez also second. So, so with that, we'll include the actual original names of the, the signs. We can go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you, colleagues, for supporting that. I truly appreciate it, and thank you for the firefighters for, for that. And to UFLAC, by the way, they're providing the funding for the signs as well. The next one I called special, colleagues, is item 7. And this is one I'm actually going to stand up and talk about. Members, this is one of the most significant pieces of legislation that I've worked on for the last six years, and it's here today. This is calling for a false alarm fee, similar to that, that we have with the Los Angeles Police Department. Last year, the city of Los Angeles, the Fire Department responded to 25,000 alarm calls. Nearly half of them, 12,000, were false. These are often repeat offenders at the same locations, many of them commercial places, that often go off regularly. Now, what happens when a false alarm is triggered for the Fire Department to respond? What happens is, they roll out all of their resources, Code Three Lights and Sirens. They put themselves in jeopardy, they put their, the communities in jeopardy, but more importantly, or worse yet, is it takes that resource out, it takes that resource out of the ability to respond to a real emergency that might be happening right down the street. And then, they have to then dispatch a resource from another division further away, increasing response times, and putting somebody who's really at jeopardy of losing their life, a choking victim, a heart attack, a car accident, because they're responding to 12,000 false alarms in the city of Los Angeles each and every year. This has been six years in the making. The average cost, the average cost for a false alarm multiplied over a year by these 12,000 false alarms is $4.1 million a year, taxpayer funds. Over the six years that we've been working on this legislation, that accounts to $20 million. Colleagues, that's 110 new, brand-new ambulances that we could have purchased over those six years at a cost of $223,000 an ambulance. That's what we could have put on the streets of Los Angeles in six years, 110 ambulances. So what this will do is it's going to replicate a similar program to what we have with the Los Angeles Police Department, that if they get a false alarm, they get notified of it, they can sign up and go to an alarm school, so there's no cost each year if they trigger a false alarm. And then we go after those triggers, particularly those that are continuous and trigger those on a regular basis with fines and fees to clean up their act, to stop sending these resources and these kinds of emergencies. This is a policy that you're about to vote on that will actually save not just taxpayer lives, or dollars, but lives. This will actually save real lives, and it'll save the Fire Department from having to respond to 12,000 false alarms every single year. So I'm really proud of the Public Safety Committee. I'm honored that the Fire Department has stepped up and worked so hard to navigate through this and create this program that will live on forever. I'm so thrilled that we're actually going to be saving lives by voting on a piece of policy that makes rational and common sense. So colleagues, with that, seeing no questions, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you for your vote on that. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for the Fire Department for being here as well. Okay, colleagues, with that, we've got two more items. Number five. I missed her, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Threw you off guard. I could, I could jump to another one. You ready? Okay. We'll wait. Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item five. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, one no.
Okay. And, and then the next item, the final item, number 15.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 15, before us is the Greek Theater Venue and Concessions Management Agreement, and it is a result of a robust and competitive process to ensure that this iconic venue continues to serve visitors and community alike. SMG's strong proposal included detailed projections on revenue sharing, sponsorships, and VIP packages, as well as a robust $4 million capital improvements plan, and they are continually addressing even more improvements on traffic, sound, and infrastructure. All in all, this was a very competitive RFP, and I'm very proud to be able to support the approval of this contract. And I really want to thank Mike Scholl, A.P. Diaz, Serina Fitz-Ward, and the RAP Board of Commissioners, and of course, our Arch Parks and Rivers Chairman, Councilman O'Farrell, and my staff, and the community for all their work during this robust process. And I urge all my colleagues to support the recommendation listed in this report. Thank you.
Great. I, I had a question on this. Do we have anybody here? Is Mr. Scholl here? RP? I just had a question on this. So my question, a couple of questions actually, and they're minor, but I was wondering on the programming, was doing a quick analysis sort of back of the napkin, it looks like the actual programming of the Greek for the, for this coming-up calendar year is actually down in the number of events planned? Is that the case? And I was trying to find out why.
I'm not sure I understand that.
In other words, well, I counted last year to this year, and it looks like we've got less nights programmed than last year.
Some of the acts that are currently booked for the Greek are not publicly released by the promoters, so there are shows that have been booked, and there are shows that are being held, they're just not publicly released yet by the promoters. They time it for when they want it to go on sale so that it's most marketable. So that's why it may look as though we are down, but we are not down on program.
We're actually up on, or, you know, right around the same, but we're, we're slightly above where we were last year.
Okay, it's just not on the website.
It's just not up yet, yeah. A lot of, not all.
You know I monitor that website. You both know I do.
Good, I'm glad.
It's one of my favorite venues in LA, so you both know. It's one of my favorite venues in LA, so you both know I do monitor that. And, and then, is the new stadium downtown going to affect? Because they're talking about putting concerts and things there as well. Is it, will that affect our, our bookings?
At the, the new football club stadium? It's probably a larger, I mean, it's a much larger venue than, than ours, so it's not likely to have, you know, a huge impact on, on the types of shows that we would put on at the Greek.
Okay, because they were talking about actually programming it for smaller shows to compete.
It, I mean, it very well could be, the more, you know, the more access there is, obviously, there's, you know, the Greek does carry its own kind of weight in that it's, you know, it's historical and a lot of artists want to play there. So, I mean, I guess time will tell, but we're, we're not seeing anything yet.
Right, got it. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other, no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. And are there any other items?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, we'll go ahead and post and refer those, colleagues. Do we have any announcements? Looking around the horseshoe, seeing none. Do we have any adjourning motions, looking to my right? Seeing no other adjourning motions on my, oh, we do. Mr. Kokorian. So, if we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise, everyone, please rise for adjourning motions. Councilmember Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, it's with sadness that I ask the City Council to adjourn this meeting in memory of Ida Carter Fisher, a longtime resident of North Hollywood who passed away peacefully at the Magnolia Rehabilitation Center earlier this year in January. Ida was born on January 13th, 1954, in St. Louis, the oldest of five children. Her devotion to her faith led her to the First Baptist Church in North Hollywood, where she really was an example of service, leadership, and volunteer work. She fulfilled many roles through the church, including as Deacon of the Outreach Ministries, Window of Hope Food Pantry, Homeless Neighbors Ministry, as well as the Hands for Hope Kids and Vision Acting Events. Ida was always volunteering at community events, and she was known for her, the smile that would just light up rooms when she walked into it. She loved to host her out-of-town family and friends, and prided herself on her knowledge and love of North Hollywood, and all of the people of North Hollywood will very much miss the impact, the positive impact that she had on her community, but will always remember her as well. She's survived by her husband, Alan Fisher, her mother, Eunice, her brother, Arthur, and her sisters, Anna, Darlene, and Telly. She will be missed, may she rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you. I have two adjourning motions, colleagues. First, it's with great sadness that I offer this adjourning motion in honor of Larry Friend, a three-year starting point guard for USC in the mid-1980s who set school records for assists in a game. Seasoned career, died of cancer Tuesday in Anaheim, he was 54 years old. Arrived at USC as an all-LA City Guard from Jordan High School in Watts, known for his speed passing ability and defensive prowess, he's set, since broken USC assist records in 1985. In his career, he averaged 4.2 assists along with 3.7 points and three-time winner of USC's Best Defensive Player Award. He was the team's MVP and Most Inspirational Player. As a 1986 senior captain, he hit game-winning shots against both Stanford in 1984, Oregon State in '85, and free throw versus UCLA in 1986. After USC, which is something that we valued in his work in the Watts community, he went back to his alma mater and worked for the LA Unified School District Assistant Basketball Coach at Jordan High School. Survived by his loving wife, Keisha, daughter, Lakeisha, granddaughter, Amari Hudson, mother, Dorothy Friend, sisters, Rebecca Williams, Rosie Friend, Irma Friend, Jaclyn Friend, Sinolia, Willingham, and brothers, Winston, Jeffrey Mitchell, and Sylvester. Larry Friend, may he rest in peace. And finally, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Peter Lucido, passed away peacefully at home, May 19th, with his loving family next to his bedside. Born in Terrasini, Sicily, on May 8th, 1939. Was a lifelong carpenter and contractor in the Harbor Area Communities. Mr. Lucido is preceded in death by his parents, Dominico and Maria, as well as his brother, Sam. Survived by his loving wife, Anna, 54 years. His children, Dominic, Anthony, Maria, and Angela, eight grandchildren. His brothers, Pasquale, Giuseppe, and Antonio, sister-in-law, Rosa, as well as numerous nieces, nephews, and cousins, and many, many friends in the San Pedro Italian-American community. Everyone who knew Peter loved him, and he's always tried to make everyone happy, joked, was, he will be dearly missed. In lieu of flowers, his family has asked for donations in his name to be made to the American Cancer Society. Peter Lucido, may he rest in peace. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other adjourning motions, however, we do have a, we're going to go ahead and recess the meeting for just a moment, because we're circulating, we're getting, letting the clerk catch up on, on the work, because we have council members submitting motions right at the tail end, which is fine. So, we'll recess for, for about one minute. By the way, no, this was not the clerk, this is the council member submitting late. And you know what? I look over there right where we're about to adjourn, I see they're, they're rushing, so we try to give them a little more time. It's not going to hurt. All right, thank you.